At least in South Lee, hopefully it's in seven o'clock in where you are. I call the meeting to order as the temporary chair of the select board due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis in accordance with Governor Sius emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04. This board is meeting electronically utilizing the Zoom platform. We previously have noticed to the public how to access this meeting using Zoom. The instructions are provided on the Town Hall's website at leehnh.org. If anyone has problems with access, please call 603-234-8194. Please note that all votes taken during the meeting should be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. Where each member states their presence, also please state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Trent Casper?
Here and alone.
Scott Bugbee here and alone. Mr. Brown, I don't see Mr. Brown.
Should we send him a text or something?
Karen said that he will pop in or out, he's not feeling well.
Okay.
So I don't see him, so it's just you and me and the rest of the attendees. So this meeting is about discussing, making some decisions in terms of moving different projects forward. So that's the topic of discussion. If you wish to be recognized, please raise your hand and Karen can recognize you. Other than that, we can get started. Anything you'd like to say for Trent?
No, not today. Gave me lunch the last time.
Not today, not ever. So it's unfortunate Mr. Brown's not here, but one of the things we talked about was talking about what the Town Hall renovation committee proposed to us. And I think we may need to make some decisions to move the whole process forward, all the things we're looking at. So that's the topic of discussion. One of the things I was reviewing is, where is it? Shoot. Where is it? Oh, that's why. The part of their presentation, they talked about the different phases. They talked about phase one was creating the new entrance to the Mass Road from Mass Road between the annex and the Town Hall. Parking lot expansion to address the library and new entrance instruction and a new well and an septic system. That was projected about $187,000. Phase two was a second interest from Mass Road into the parish house to support the sound center loop road. Additional parking, new sister installation, emergency vehicle access in the loop road. That was at $75,000. And phase three was new town office driveway and parking and a new septic system hookup and utility corridors and hookups for the town office building. And one of the things I was thinking about is there's some coordination needs to go ahead between the library project and these particular things we're looking at. So I was wondering if maybe the select board, which I guess is just you and me at the moment, can talk about how we can kind of maybe interweave those particular things that we think should be done or some people think should be done so that we don't hold up the library project and we kind of dovetail those two things together.
So how do we go about doing that?
Well, in terms of, like for instance, that first project is $187,000. And that was staged, at least proposed between 2023 and 2024. So I was wondering if there's a way that we can maybe do it way sooner than that. And I'm not sure, we have to look in terms of funding process, but I think that's the phase that needs to be interfaced with the library project. So that was my thoughts.
Yeah, so the soonest that we could pass something that large would be at the March vote next year.
I have to leave the meeting for just a second, it's an emergency, thank you.
I'm sorry. Do you, do you think that we could, is there, are there any of those things that we could do beforehand? What do we need to?
Well, depending on what the source of funds is, if we could use some of the funds from one of the trust funds to do things like that. So we'd have to take a look in terms of what those particular funds are having them and what has been set aside, at least in planning purposes, to use those funds to fix things or repair things or things like that. And I'm not sure in terms of doing a new road and parking lot, if that is something that we could use the town buildings or not. I don't know, there's something maybe Mr. Tapping can talk to us about.
I think Katrinka has her hand up as well.
Oh.
Yeah, I just, thank you, thank you, Ms. Casper. Yeah, I just wanted to, if you could repeat what that first phase is, because it seems to me the parking lot, if you got that all beautiful before we started construction, it wouldn't necessarily make too much sense. We're going to be having some machinery coming in or, you know, possibly. I don't, you know, I really wondered, does that have to be in an early phase?
Well, I think that's part of the whole dovetailing Katrinka, because the part that needs to kind of be done first is kind of the well and stuff. The well has to be moved.
The well, yeah, the well I understand about, and we should talk about that and decide that. But I'm wondering if the parking lot really is that important at this stage? Since the, really the only people who are using the parking lot, you know, is the library.
Yep, well, it can be definitely at the end of that particular stage. But that's what I'm talking about in terms of interweaving, there's some things that you need to do, there's some things we need to do, we just need to coordinate those.
At what point do we pull in a civil engineer to help us with those determinations as well?
In terms of what needs to come before what?
Yeah, to know what needs to be done and where it needs to go and to kind of have some, I mean, we've had a lot of opinions, but I think somebody that's actually gonna.
Yeah. Well, you'd have to have somebody looking at the whole thing, not just one piece of the other.
And can we look at the whole piece if we haven't as a town voted for the Town Hall to be in that location?
I don't, well, in terms of these particular things, I don't think that has anything to do with the office building at this particular moment.
Okay, so those are just things that need to happen for that area, yeah.
Yeah, because personally, this is just my opinion, mind you. To put parking in there, you're going to have to move the well. And also we need to provide septic system for the library and the Town Hall, the current one. So those need to be done, so that has nothing really to do with the office building in terms of where it's located or anything like that. Because that office building, even if it was put on the town, town center site, would have its own septic system. It could use possibly the same well, but it would need its own septic system.
Right, so that would be something that would go forward regardless. One thing I'm wondering about too is the Lee Historical Museum. And if that is in a location, if cost effective wise, if that's in a location that makes sense for this going forward, or if that's something, considering that it doesn't have necessarily the best foundation, if that's something that could be considered to move to give more room for the library and to have that parking loop make more sense? I just, I wasn't sure if we had thought about that yet or discussed it.
It's possible, in the previous plan that we did, there was costing done in terms of moving it to another location.
I think that was like $75,000 or something, right?
I don't remember off the top of my head, Mr. Tapping might.
There's just something, that's something that a civil engineer or somebody might have, I don't know, more understanding of, but yeah.
Yes, because right now there's no facilities in it. It's got electricity and it's got eat, eat, but that's it. There's no water going to it. We don't count those as a facility feature, Trent, so at least I don't.
But a good foundation might help, anyway, Mr. Tapping.
Yeah, I had looked up the price and to move it onto a new foundation, to construct the new foundation, move the building, hook it back up to few utilities it does have, was $75,000. There are benefits to doing that. As far as space utilization, right now, there is not enough space between the museum and the 50-foot front setback to allow for a parking area which has a center aisle and stalls on both sides. And going back to the schedule, when we made our presentation on the 15th, that schedule that was shown for phase one, phase two, and phase three, those were just very rough. It was, it was put in before we even knew what the library schedule was. When the library trustees told us what their schedule was, just in our presentation, we pointed out, you can see here a sequencing mismatch between the completion of the library addition and the phase one site development, which provides the new well, septic system, parking for the library and Town Hall. I think those things were done at such a course, that schedule was done at such a course level that you really can't talk about those things as being all having to be done at one time. I think what's needed is to develop these, a more detailed schedule for that first phase, to lay out a detailed plan and show how those pieces fit together.
Don Jeans has something to say as well.
Oh, could I just inter, Mr. Tapping, could you give us, and I know you can't give us your professional opinion, but can you give us your personal opinion? Could the town utilize the Town Building Trust Fund, a capital reserve fund, for doing things that are in phase one, for making a new entrance, expanding the parking lot and putting it in a new well and septic system? What's your thoughts on that?
I think probably, certainly when we were talking about building a new office building in addition on the library, is that one big plan two plans ago?
Yeah.
That Town Building Capital Reserve Fund was planned to be used toward that large project.
Okay.
So a building that has no access to it, no driveway, no parking, no septic system, is not a usable building.
Well, it sounds like a historical society museum, is that kind of building, maybe, I don't know.
That has parking, it has electric.
I suppose, okay, all right. All right, I'm sorry, who wanted to speak? I'm sorry. I, no, Dot, that's not Don Jeans.
I know, she's on the other side of that picture, go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Hi, Scott, I just wanted to add on to what you were saying. From an engineering standpoint, if everybody thinks about the site development as vertical, low ground, ground surface and above ground. So I think where you started was basically saying we would need to be starting at the utility level. But you need, and as John said, you need, you need to be very detailed in that. And so clearly moving, getting a well location figured out and a septic location so that if we start to do any parking lot planning, not that we would be paving, but cutting roads, doing whatever we, you know, clearing and grubbing to get the loop road started so that we have plenty of room for the library to do their work.
Yeah.
But we want to do the proper utility corridors, the stick-ups for the library and things like that. That's just phase one, but there's a lot of quote unquote engineering, surveying, details that you'd want to do as that part of the project. And it should be, you know, we should be preparing a kind of a detailed site plan with you know, critical, you know, kind of a critical path schedule and those sort of things. Because we're trying to have these things done so that the library can keep moving to their schedule.
Yeah.
So John, John touched on it, you touched on it, but just so everybody knows that even this portion of the prod, the first phase of the project requires some detailed planning and engineering work, so.
And I think, oh, thanks. And I think I agree totally with what you're saying, but I think, I think maybe what we're all feeling is a little bit of inertia. And I think the select board has to point the direction and say, this is where we're progressing. And I think it would be, conservatives say that it would be good to at least commit to phase one. Like we said before, like I said before, you know, this does not commit us to an office building in that particular site. It basically provides services for those structures that are already there. And I think no matter what we do, we're going to want to put a new well in and a new septic system and parking as well as doing the library project. So I think, I think people are looking for some direction from the select board to say, yes, we're committing to this. This is how we're going to move forward, this is how much it's going to cost, and this is how we're going to fund it, so.
Yep, I like that.
Paul Gazowski would like to speak.
Yeah.
Sure.
Where is he?
He's coming, go ahead on mute.
Oh, there he is, up top.
Paul, you just need to unmute and you should be all set.
Should we go forward and then if he unmutes, we'll stop what we're saying?
Sure, does anybody have anything else they want to say? No?
I know, wow.
So Katrinka, what do you think about that? Do you think the select board could commit to doing something in phase one? Maybe we can task the Town Hall renovation committee to work on that particular interweaving plan between the library project and this particular phase one things that we talked about, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense as long as we're working together and everyone's communicating and it's very clear. I think we need dates and times, you know, this is when this is going to be done by, this is when this is going to be done by so that we, you know, don't lose track of it as the summer passes and all that.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I think Peg Dolan has something to say.
Oh, yeah, I was just wondering, phase one, because I had to leave for a few minutes, is that going to include working on the library and doing, you know, the septic, the well and the parking lot? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes, what, what I said, just to reiterate, the presentation that the Town Hall renovation committee gave to the select board, what, a month ago, month and a half, something like that? Phase one included a new entrance to the Mass Road between the annex and the Town Hall, parking lot expansion to address library and the new interest construction, and also a new well and a new septic system. But what we also said is those particular things need to be dovetailed, if you will, in with the library project. Because there's certain things, like we said, there's no sense, you know, you guys finishing your project, doing your landscaping, then we come in and say, oh no, we got to tear up part of your landscaping because we've got to put in a new well line and a new septic line and stuff like that. That doesn't make any sense. So we talked about dovetailing those two projects, so. And then Mr. Jeans and Mr. Tapping talked about, you know, we need to make, set up a schedule in terms of, you know, what comes first, dates and times, oh, not necessary times, dates, so that we all understand what's happening in the order that they're happening in. And also maybe engaging or should gauge somebody to oversee those things so that we have all of our ducks in a row, if you will.
I was just going to ask you if you'd be overseeing that, yeah.
So, hope that helps.
Yes, as long as, I mean, the library has started their process, so I don't want to see it stopped in midstream. That's the only thing, that was my only concern.
Well, the other thing we talked about at the last meeting, and maybe this was just me, but I think there would be some benefit, and I know you guys don't want to be stopped, I don't want to say in stop, but you're going to pay a premium for getting building supplies right now. So there might be some benefit to delaying it a little bit in terms of buying those particular supplies. So when the price comes down, you get more bang for your buck, or the town will get more bang for its buck.
Yeah.
Because there just, there's a thing in, I think it was CNN, that the average house now is costing $36,000 more than before COVID just because of materials and labor and stuff, so. That's a, that's a good percentage, so.
I think, Katrinka, did you want to say something?
Oh, we got lots of hands.
Yes, we do, and Annie Gazowski wants to speak as well.
Okay.
Let me just, like, really, really, really quickly, I don't think we have to worry about landscaping because that would be the very last thing that we would do. I'm thinking 2024, if we're lucky, so can we just not bring up the landscaping issue again? The trustees, you know, we're great, we can plant our own plants, it's not an issue, and I can wait to do that because I have plenty to do. Also, if we were to actually stay on relative track and move forward with our civil engineering and, you know, some fine tuning designs, work on the variance, work with conservation and zoning, we would be lucky to break ground in 2022 in the spring. So I'm not, I don't want to wait for, you know, waiting for construction costs to come down. I mean, we're talking next year, hopefully things will be better next year, I don't know. I mean, my, my experience is that when prices go up, they don't come down. But I'd be happy to be wrong on that one, so I just, I just don't see that that's a really, yes, I mean, for us to start building tomorrow. Right.
Well, they were saying 12 to 18 months, so probably in 2022, yes, it will be coming down then.
So we, we would be fine if we could, you know, keep on our little treadmill and keep moving towards our goals, and now it's Annie's turn.
No Paul yet, Annie?
Yes, he's here.
Oh, okay.
He'll, he'll speak from my.
Okay, there you go.
All right, all right.
You know, I'm not sure why I'm.
Just turn it off. He's trying to use his cellphone.
And we can't even unmute on Annie's machine, so.
Not you, but me.
Yeah, me, I can't be unmuted, which maybe is a desirable thing. I just have a question for you, I'm, my, my first reaction to, to the chair not being present was that I, I, I think that's unfortunate because I think the chair should be present. And I know that legally you can conduct a meeting without the chair because you have a quorum. But I think it would be highly desirable to have the chair present. And, and the second thing I want to observe is the, the plan you're discussing here was presented to the select board but not accepted by the select board. And now you're proceeding utilizing that plan, which never really was accepted and vetted by the select board. Personally, I think there are aspects of the plan that are, that are quite good. But I thought tonight's meeting was about the library. And, and to to utilize the plan, a nine-year plan at that, at this stage basically is a form of advocating for the plan when indeed it wasn't really accepted by the board. I, I, I think that's a step that needs to be taken, and it wasn't taken, along with the CIFP was presented but not accepted. So you need to be mindful of that as you proceed, Chair. And, and I think it is possible to have an intelligent, thoughtful, progressive discussion about the library project tonight without really including this plan at all.
I appreciate that, the reason I wanted to have this meeting last week was because I think that it's so important that we understand the pieces of the puzzle together. We figure out what we can and can't go forward with so that we know how to move quickly. So I appreciate what you said, but I do, for me, the meeting wasn't just about the library, the, the meeting was about the, the needs of the town altogether and how to make sure they work together.
But, 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 but in truth, the, the board never accepted the plan, that's a procedural matter.
Right, which is what we're discussing because we want to know, like, I want to know who is going to be in charge of it? Is this the plan we want to do and how do we know that it's a good plan?
Well, I'm not sure that procedurally that's the way to do things.
Well, my, my expectations for this particular meeting was the board needs to make some decisions to move forward in terms of all the, all the things we're looking at, not just the library but other stuff as well. Because people that have been doing some volunteer work need some direction, you know, how are we going to move forward? And, you know, how is that particular, whatever it is, going to be paid for? So the board needs to make some decisions so things can start to move forward. Right at the moment, you've got a committee that's kind of fulfilled, and at least in their eyes, hopefully I'm not speaking out of turn, fulfilled their charge, and they're looking for more work, but they have not been given any more work. They have not been given a new charge. But I think that's why I'm here, we need to make some decisions as a select board to move this particular thing forward. And I cannot speak for Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown, I was told, was not feeling well. He's ailing, he was going to try to attend, so that's very unfortunate, but, you know, people get sick, so can't control that, so.
Shouldn't you wait and vote when you have Mr. Brown present? Because this is where Mr. Bugbee sits on the committee, I, I think it would be best to have Mr. Brown present as well, chairman, to make the vote. I think it would look better for transparency in the future.
I think it's just important that he is able to watch these recordings and, and catch up on where we're at, so he knows, you know, what we're voting on and.
Well, I agree, but I think he should be included in the vote myself.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it is unfortunate, he's sick.
Maybe it's something we can do also at a regular select board meeting where we do have more public available and it is more, you know, open to, to that. I don't know, I mean, we could outline what those things are and have the motions ready so that we can just vote.
Well, the other things, we meet, when's the next time we meet Katrink?
First, the first, yeah, Tuesday.
So that's also something, if this is something you and I are in support of, because we also have, I'm just looking, Town Hall renovation committee meets on the third, so they don't meet before that, so. Because in my eyes, I would like to have them maybe start doing something else in terms of charging stuff, so.
I, I think that it's important to have a charge, and I think what, for me personally, the, the next piece of the puzzle is what exactly has to be done before the library? What can we do with the library to make sure that their engineering and everything is ready so that they can break ground, get ground? So to me, that would be the, the next charge would be, you know, I want details on those exact things that have to be done before so the library can move forward. Annie Gazowski wanted to say something, should we let you get in there?
Yes, I just wanted to say before that one of the things that we had asked for the select board to approve is our appointment of a civil engineering company. And this would also move right into other things that are happening within the site. So I think that this is still something that we are hoping that the select board will do is okay, our choice of firms.
And let us move forward with that so we could be, you know, feel like we're making progress.
Hope you're unmute, Karen.
John Tapping would like to speak as well.
As to hiring the engineering firm to do the civil engineering and the design of the green infrastructure, this is something that needs to be done on a site basis. You're wasting money and coming up with a less than optimum design if you do it on item by item. One building, one parking lot, another building. You need to do that entire cluster of Town Hall, parking lot, library, museum, if it stays there, or a museum, if, if, if there's no museum, it's moved someplace else. And so it, to me, it does not make sense to hire that engineering firm at this point before you have at least a rough design of what it is you want to do there. And then that needs to go out to bid, to select from multiple, multiple bids.
Katrink?
I was just going to say, we have, we have our rough design and, you know, actually, our rough design does not entail moving the museum because we, we assumed that was off the table, and if it happens, you know, I don't think that's going to affect our plan. A parking lot is not necessary for our plan, we're not, we're not designing a new parking lot. And because we're not adding a bathroom, we don't need to design the septic. I agree that placement. I agree that placement of the well is something that should be, you know, considered. But I do think the site firm, and we, we did go out to bid, we got two bids, and they got augmented with, when, you know, talking to conservation's needs and, you know, we're, we're ready to, to do something. I don't think it's a waste of money.
Mr. Tappan?
Uh, first, um, the library may not care whether or not it has a safe parking lot. Um, but the town certainly should. And the parking lot that we have is not a safe parking lot. Um, we need to have a driveway between the state highway and the parking area. And, uh, whether or not the library has its footprint and its, design ready for the engineering of, of what goes on around it. You still need to do it all as one. Um, the, the architect for the library, um, in the last meeting, pointed out that a holistic approach, um, to the site design of that area was a good idea. Um, and that's what the THRC has recommended. Um, and that's what we're talking about here, um, is avoiding a piece by piece, um, plan and instead doing a holistic design for that part of the town center.
Peg wants to speak?
Yeah, um, John, I think the architect said, in the best of worlds, that would be one project. But the library really can start this project on its own as far as the engineering part. I don't think, you know, we should stop what we're trying to do and do it in one big hole. Because first of all, you know, in my, we don't even know if you're going to get a warrant article at some point to build a new town hall. So, I mean, it just seems like the, you may, maybe people think that the parking lot isn't safe. But I've lived here for 37 years, and I don't know of one accident. But I will say, I mean, I would think it's even safer now because we don't have the town hall. We don't have a lot of cars up there. So to me, I'm sorry, but I just think that that's kind of a non-issue at this point.
Well, I think Peg, uh, we're not even talking about a town office building at this particular time. We're just talking about this new entrance, the parking lot and the well and the septic. So it has nothing to do with an office building. So there will be no waiting for, you know, a warrant article for the office building. We're talking about approximately $187,000 to do the things, at least for those particular four things, so.
John Tappan would like to speak.
Um, yeah, uh, a safe, when I talk about it not being a safe parking lot, it has nothing or almost nothing to do, uh, with how many people are using it unless it's, unless it's always empty. When, when you are driving on the state highway, you're using, um, what's called fast thinking, system one. Um, and in a parking lot, uh, you need to be using system two where you're, you're thinking about, is that car parking, backing out? Where are those people going? Um, is that little child going to run out there and so forth? Um, and right now, we have no transition from the state highway to the parking lot. In fact, seven of our parking spaces are either in this, the highway right of way or partially in the right of way. Um, and that's something that we know needs to be fixed. Um, DOT, uh, is, when we talked to the DOT engineer, he really wants to see our parking lot changed. He does not want us to, uh, be able to continue with a hun, what is effectively 170-foot wide driveway. Um, and so we know that that's a situation that needs to be fixed. Uh, we know that we now have enough land to do that. Um, and we also know that, uh, we don't want to continue with septic tanks that have to be frequently pumped. Uh, now that we have enough land, uh, for septic systems. Um, and, uh, what the architect said was that, given the tight, uh, site arrangement that we have, um, that then, um, you should have a holistic design. Um, and that's it.
I guess the question is, is it possible to have, uh, to have that design worked on at the same time as the library so that we are saving money together, have, have them work? You know, but, but before Katrin, are we gonna?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, our architect also said that the work with septic and the parking lot are, what we want to do with the library is far back, you know, from that and that it really, you know, they don't impact each other particularly. So I just wanted to bring that particular quote from our architect into the conversation again.
Hey, I know there was some talk about putting the, um, electric utilities and stuff underground, which would definitely be something you'd want to do before you put in the.
Parking lot, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, that, you know, yes, we, we have talked about it. Right now, it's not in our budget because it's just, you know, we're, we have a very tight budget of doing things that, that we need to do, I, you know, as opposed to needs and wants. I know Mr. Tappan is happy to talk about needs and wants. And it would be nice, but if we don't have, you know, it's just, we don't have the money right, you know, to even contemplate it right now.
So I think the thing I'm confused about is what is it that's in the plan that the library has that, um, changes if we do this together? And Mr. Bugby, maybe you understand this more. What are, what are we? What exactly are we waiting for or looking for or thinking we can do differently?
I think it's just the dovetailing of those particular two things, those two particular projects. That's, that's what I think the big point of this whole thing is about, so that there's coordination between the two. Uh, in terms of whatever the library people are proposing inside of the walls, doesn't really make too, too much difference. But there's interfaces to the outside in terms of the septic system, the well. The, the idea is for the well to go into, uh, the library and then, um, branch off to go to the town hall. So that has to be coordinated. Also have to coordinate in terms of the septic hiccup, um, you know, how that's going to work, where that's going to come from. It's going to come from the library to the septic system and then from the town hall to the septic system. So all that has to be coordinated. So it'd be nice to have one particular firm doing that. And that's, that's what I'm looking for. Um, I don't think any of these things we're proposing has anything really to do to the inside of the library.
Right.
It's necessarily how the library is going to connect to the particular site with its utilities and things like that, so.
So one of the things I noticed on the last plan was that some of the spending that increased was so that the, um, North Point could talk to other commissions. And that's, I think, what I sort of viscerally felt like, let's make sure we're not wasting money on that, that we're actually just communicating together from the start. If we put these together, would that be a possible cost savings to the library because we're putting these together at the same time? And then at that point, you know, is that a, is that an option?
Well, I don't think the North Point people are really considering in terms of the costs associated with putting in a new septic line and a new septic system, excuse me, a new well and a new septic system. That's not even in their, their purview at the moment, in their scope.
So maybe that's something we could put on, we could, we could look into as the town and see. We have a bunch of hands up though.
Uh, Mr. Tappan then?
Karen, I think Don Jean's had her hands up first and Karen's trying to say her name.
I'll let Karen recognize him because she's paying attention to that. I'm kind of.
I know, I know.
Everybody and.
Go ahead, Don.
Okay, I, I just wanted to add, uh, surface water drainage to having the entire lot looked at at once because you have to know where you're going with water. And we can have giant puddles, as we know, that we've dealt with at Mastway and whatever. So where that water goes needs to be looked at from the entire town hall lot, not just one building at a time, because they might be going, you know, shedding it to the opposite direction. So there needs to be a comprehensive plan from that standpoint, too.
And I think that the other thing, and we haven't talked about this too, too much, but in terms of the whole library plan itself, you know, there were some things the conservation commission gave in terms of things you need to look for. So I, I don't think we've kind of finalized those particular things. We haven't even seen the water runoff. Uh, particular plans, we've got told that the two gables have been removed. So I think there's still some work to be done with that in terms of working with the committees and commissions in terms of the whole plan. I personally would love to see it moved closer to the road so that we're further away from the, the wetlands. And I know maybe that's not possible to do completely, but even if we can mitigate it at some point, you know, moving it closer or something like that. I understand in terms of what the architects told us in terms of coming off where the circulation desk in the library director's office is, would be problematic. But how much is that? Um, is it worth the money to spend to do it in that connecting instead of connecting off the 1996 addition? That would take it further away from the wetland, so.
I spent a whole bunch of time at the, um, at the fire, the safety complex. And I think, you know, when you have those come together and then there's nowhere to go, that's, that's really challenging. So we, I, yeah. But there was a design that moved the, um, library angle. So I, yeah, but at some point, we have to start making decisions.
But at some point, I mean, that's really kind of, part of that is up to the library. We do plan to meet with conservation and to talk with them and to move that part forward. Some of those questions about runoff would be answered with civil engineering, which is what we've been trying to get. Um, but yeah, I mean, move, moving the, the addition forward, it would cost, A, it would cost money to to figure out how much more that would cost, and it would cost, it would cost more. And we, you know, we're, we have a very limited budget. We're really trying very hard to work within the money we have and then fundraise the rest. And, you know, if, if, if things get thrown in, in our way, which make this more expensive, you know, we, you know, there, you know, there we are. We don't, you know, we can't do it.
Right.
Well, ultimately, I think I'll have to disagree with part of what she said, Katrinka, because ultimately, it's the town's going to decide in terms of what gets done and what doesn't get done. The libraries have authority, the library trustees have authority inside the building. The building is still the town's building. So the town needs to decide that as well. So it's not just up to the trustees to say, yes, we're doing the building and this is how it's going to be and that's how it's going to look.
Oh, no, I didn't.
Really, the town's building.
Yeah, I didn't mean to imply that.
Well, you said the trustees will decide what the building is and where it is.
Well, we're the ones who are charged, you know?
Yeah.
You know, we have the money. We're fundraising money for it.
Yeah.
You know, we need to kind of have some say in how that money is spent and.
Oh, yes.
And obviously, what the library trustees and the towns, we have to work together, obviously, which is why we're all here.
So for me, I would love to understand what the cost would be to attach it in a different place. I, I know the people that were, um, speaking to that said it'd be more, definitely it would be more. There's structural issues in terms of when you, when you undermine that particular section of the building, you have to shore it up and stuff like that. But what does that cost? Is the town willing to say, okay, we'll face that particular cost just so we can move it away from the wetlands protection zone? Maybe that's something of worth to the town. Um, I think that something needs to be explored. And if that's something that you guys can afford, maybe that's something the town can pay for if they're interested to do that. To say, okay, we'll pay for that particular, you know, investigation so we can make the decision. Maybe it's, you know, $20,000, maybe that's worth it to us. Maybe it's $30,000. I don't know. Um, but I think that's something that needs to be explored.
And you would also want to explore moving the museum. Back when we did that one comprehensive plan, our addition was forward. But the museum was being moved. We, you know, we have it back so that we have a nice, attractive space with the museum. You know, I saw that as a nice partnership, but, um, if we get too close to it.
Yep.
We're, we're really encroaching and we lose that partnership. So then.
Yep.
You want that $75,000 to move the, the museum.
Well, then that's something the town has to decide if that's something they're interested in doing, so.
Mr. Tappan has a question, but can I say that quickly? When you have the design where it came out and then moves an angle, do you know the difference in price in that? Or was it just a, a markup?
It, it was, it was over our budget. I mean, we were, they started, they started talking a budget over a million. We don't, you know. It was just, no, no, no.
All right, thank you. Just wanted to know where we were at. Thank you, Mr. Tappan.
We're trying to do the 800,000 thing.
A while back, select person Casper asked about the advantages of doing the green infrastructure design for the whole site rather than just a building at a time. Um, and Don Jean's pointed out the functional advantage, the reason why you really want to consider all of the impervious surfaces in one plan. Uh, but there's also a financial advantage. It would cost you more if you were to pay an engineering company to do, uh, a, uh, design for the runoff for one building at a time, and then the next building, and then the parking lot, and do each one as a separate piece. If you do the whole site, um, then the cost per piece would be lower. And that would mean that the, if you wanted to divide it up this way, the library's piece of the total, uh, green infrastructure design for the total site, the library's piece would be less than it would be if the library proceeds on its own.
So we could get an estimate and get a, you know, have them look at it, including the library and decide together and then do one thing. Yeah, I'm, I see Katrinka shaking your head. I, I think that's a great way to go. What do you think, Mr. Bugby?
Yes, anything to save money, but.
So can we do that? When can we do that?
Yeah.
Who does that?
North Point to include that in, in their bid. And we, I think at that point, the project is much larger. So you, you would want to talk to Joneson Beach again or.
And the third person, yeah.
To get, to get estimates because that is going to be a much larger project.
Yeah. And I think that's where we're at right now, right? I mean, we have enough information. We know what we're doing. So why don't we do that? And then we can figure out what portion, and hopefully that will come in at a smaller cost for the library and a smaller cost for the rest of the town because we're working together.
Yeah, I definitely think there needs to be something, some firm that's overarching, that's looking at all this stuff at once.
Yep, yep.
Because one of the things, and, and I'm, I'm a neophyte in terms of water runoff. But if you have that particular, you know, edge of that particular roof of the library close to the, the wetlands, how do you get that water away so it doesn't go into the wetlands? You know, there's smarter people than me. They probably know the answers to those particular things. But that has to be worked out with the rest of the site as well because, you know, you can draw it off, but where are you going to put it? So is that a rain garden off to the side someplace or something like that, like?
Dry well off of a, of a, whatever. Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of options and we just need to explore them.
Yeah, but that has to be coordinated site-wise, just not just the library, so.
Um, Annie is asking, did you want to say something?
Yes, I just wanted to say that whenever we ask for proposals, um, we asked Joneson Beach and North Point. And there was a third company that just said they didn't have time. They wouldn't put it in. I'm sure Karen Rossi can come up with another, um, engineering firm that we could, um, tap into and that we could uh, bring on board for some of this or all of it. I don't know. It seems right now that it would take, um, uh, them to, once again, uh, resubmit their proposal. And if we have a third one, then that person, that firm would have to bring their proposal to the forefront.
Do you think because we have your proposal already that that might help speed it along? Because it's already partially, partially done. I'm just wondering if that, if that will help.
Karen, what do you think about another company? You could.
Sure.
Okay, you could.
Yep, yep. I can give you some names. And it would just be good to itemize exactly what they want, you want them to quote, because I think the North Point and the Jonesa Beach are a little different.
Yeah, I want apples to apples would be really helpful. We have to be very specific with exactly what we want and who, who is going to be that person. We have to be very specific with exactly what we want and who, who is going to be that person that can do that exact, you know, itemization, I guess is the question. It, it's just a hint, it's probably not me.
Why not? Why not?
It's not my wheelhouse.
You got, you got, you got up to speed on a whole bunch of stuff, you know, go get some materials and do some reading.
Brain exploding. So I think we just, I mean, is that something that, you know?
I can work with Annie on that.
Yeah, great. And then, and then somebody from the Town Hall Renovation Commission can talk about this specific. Or maybe that's what you guys work on on the third is figuring out what exactly, um, are we asking them to look at for going forward so that, you know, we can pay for it all in one, one lump sum?
So I, I think when we meet on the first, we need to have a discussion with Mr. Brown. Hopefully he's well again.
Hello, Mr. Brown. Thanks for watching the recording.
Okay. Okay, yeah, you're definitely a star at talking to your audience already. Um, but, uh, I think we need to have a discussion about, you know, are, are we as a group committed to those particular things, interweaving that with the library? And also maybe charging the THRC with what are the things that need to be included so that those, you know, the entrance, the parking lot, well and septic runoff and water runoff and stuff are all in there so they're itemized. So these firms can address each of those points and the cost of doing that particular thing.
Mm-hmm. Sounds good. Do we, we have a lot of very intelligent people that haven't spoken. Is there anyone who has something that they're wishing they're wondering if they should say that we could, that, that we should be warned about or think about or anything? No? Okay, just wanna make sure everyone has a chance to get all the opinions out. So what I'm hearing is that what we wanna do is speak to three firms, including the two that we've already spoken to, one, a new one. And that next Thursday, the Town Hall Renovation Commission will come up with, committee will come up with the
The third.
Sorry.
The third.
That's not next Thursday?
It's the third, isn't it?
This week?
The week from, is it a week from this Thursday?
Yeah, week from this Thursday.
It's not the third?
The third.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, that's what it said. So then you can give a very detailed outline of the things that need to be in part of this estimate. And then we can have a real apples to apples, um, comparison.
Yep.
And Karen Rossi can help us with that. So we know who's gonna do it, we know when we're gonna do it and we know who we're gonna ask.
Um, Karen knows who we're gonna.
Yeah, should we vote on that? That's a good point.
I don't think we need to know. While we spoke earlier, Mr. Brown should be included, so.
Well, I'm at the group. Everybody.
I mean, I don't, I think that to make this decision, it's okay. I thought you were gonna vote on like more expansive things earlier.
Yeah, no, we're, we're deciding to decide.
All right.
John Tappin would like to speak.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, uh, in order to get that quote, one of the things that you're gonna have to decide um, is the extent of the in- infrastructure that you're going to be building in the first stage. Um, in, in particular, um, is the historical society gonna be moved? And how much parking are you gonna build? Uh, because when you, when you correct for the deficiencies that we have right now, um, you're gonna lose at least seven parking spaces.
Okay.
Um, and so you're gonna want to expand that parking. What is that? How big is that first stage?
Can we go back to, and I'm not sure, was it you, John, or was it Ben that came up with these numbers? I think it was Ben, wasn't it?
Uh, yes.
What, what did Ben use as a parking lot size for that hundred and eighty seven thousand?
That cost of the first stage is, is one that I did.
Oh.
And that was.
I used, I, uh, on the parking, John and I combined a bunch of the numbers together, Scott, so.
Yeah.
Uh, some of those were taken from the original estimate that we did at the town center, good town version committee. We scaled up basically, um, on some of the other things, so.
So.
As John said, you know, they're, you know, they're
They're rough.
They're rough. Please understand that.
That first stage, um, was based on the design that we presented, which showed an expansion that would give after, um, the correct driveway is put in. Um, we give thirty two stalls, um, and that included three van access and a delivery stall. Um, and that was a, had a, a total paved area, the amount of new paved area, uh, the amount of land to be cleared. Um, and we went back and looked at the cost that we had previously gotten from the two cost consultants that we had, um, scaled those area, um, and then scaled them for, uh, changes over time. Um, and that's how those first costs would develop for the first stage.
Okay.
Um, and that was, that was, like I said, thirty two stalls. Uh, but that's a TBD. Um, the thirty two stalls is certainly not enough, uh, for town hall as meeting space and an office building at the town center.
Yep. But we're not there yet. We're not, we're not, we're not there yet.
About what do you wanna do in the first stage?
Yeah.
Um, and that's something that the select board would need to decide um, and approve so that you have that actual, um, preliminary design to show to the engineering company to say, this is the area for which we need the engineering design for, um, for handling the runoff.
Yeah, is that something that the group could come up to get, give us a, a choice? You know, how this, what about this one or this one? And then we could decide?
Uh, yes, we could.
That's great.
In the last committee, um, for site design, I came up with five versions.
Different, great. I can pick between five.
Right now, there's just one.
Okay.
And, and that has the museum, um, staying where it is. An obvious other one is if the museum moved, what would the parking lot look like then? Um, so, yeah, you can have multiple.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be really helpful. And I, I think one thing that I've heard a lot, um, in talking to the community is there's a lot of mixed feelings about parking. It's a huge topic people love to talk about. So one thing I would like to suggest is an idea that maybe we have, um, a very planned parking and like a smaller size and then a very easy way to add on to that parking if needed. That might be really helpful because I don't wanna not have the town hall built because everyone's like, wow, the parking lot's too big. And then, eh, eh, so maybe that's just, you know, if, if it's an easy thing where we planned it and it's very easy to extend, that might be helpful, so.
That was, that was the idea.
Perfect.
To do it in a, because really this is modular. We're doing modular to this whole thing because
Just wanna do the first.
We're taking it in stages, so, whoa, we're taking it in stages, so.
Yeah, the only, Scott, the only thing I will remind everybody, and I know John's brought this up too, is that we have to make sure that we work with and address public safety. And so the parking lot, as we've been discussed, the full site plan, discussing it, involves a loop road so that, you know, um, public safety, emergency vehicles, et cetera.
Right.
Can.
That should be first stage.
Yeah. Not that we have to do it all, but I mean, you know, the plan should be in there so that we're clearing for that loop road, et cetera, and, um, always keep the, when you're planning, always keep the future in mind.
Yes.
And, um, you know, et cetera, so.
Oh, public, public safety, but also public works as well, because they have to clear it.
Great.
Annie Kazaski is patiently with me.
Yes, very.
Yes, I just wanted to say that, um, the trustees are really anxious to come to the next Conservation Commission, uh, meeting, but we have not seen anything, um, on the calendar because June isn't really up there yet. So if we could, uh, find out when the next meeting is, we would like to be put on the agenda.
Our next meeting will be Monday, June seventh.
Seventh, okay.
And next week is when we put our agenda together and get it posted. So that, we haven't seen anything yet because it's too soon.
All right.
We'll save some time for you on the agenda for June seventh and we start.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Jean.
I, anything else?
So we, we're gonna have choices to look at. We're gonna have, um, different companies to work with once we have choices of what we're going to ask about it and we're gonna compare apples to apples. We're gonna vote on that plan on Tuesday. With Mr. Brown.
First, the first, yes.
Great, okay, so I wanna make sure we knew exactly where we were.
So one of the things, and unfortunately Julie's not here. Um, but wait a minute, is Denise here? Where's Denise?
She's next to you on my screen.
Oh, yeah, I've got like two Brady bunches here with all the screens going on. Um, Denise, can you, um, touch base with Julie when she comes back? And can you, uh, ask her for us to brief Mr. Brown in terms of what happened tonight? And also see if he can watch this particular presentation or this particular meeting. So he's up to speed, so when we meet on the first, that he is fully aware of what we've discussed and what we're looking to accomplish on that June first meeting, please.
We can reach out to him, right?
I'll reach out to him tomorrow.
Well, it's just Katrina and I can't, so that's why I'm asking.
Julie won't be back until Tuesday.
Okay, so.
So I'll reach out to him tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
If you can just do that, so he's up to speed. So he isn't blindsided by what we talked about tonight and so he understands what we wanna accomplish on that meeting. That would be great.
And if he has any questions to ask, uh, then you can have those ready.
Yep, yep, that would be great.
All right. All right. Missing anything?
Excuse me?
I said, are we missing anything? Anything else we need to discuss?
I don't know. I don't know.
Looks good.
I think we're all good.
Thanks to everyone for showing up and being here and helping with this. This is a really big decision.
Well, I think, I think, at least for me, things are moving forward. Uh, I, I personally thought we were kinda stagnated there for a while, so we'll see. So hopefully we.
There's more than just you feeling that way, yeah.
Well, I can always speak for myself, Katrina. I can always speak for myself.
Move along.
Yeah, move along. All right.
Thanks, everyone.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'd like to motion to adjourn.
Uh, I second.
Lovely.
There's no discussion. All those are famously I.
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.